Okay, this is our special city council meeting, our budget workshop. Tuesday, September the third, twenty forty-four. And with that, Jason, if you want to call roll.
Mayor Island.
Here.
Councilman Phillips.
Here.
Councilman Richards.
Here.
Councilman Benegras.
Here.
Councilman DeWomack.
Pretty good.
Here.
Pretty good.
Okay, so um. This is the first five, maybe six budget workshops, and tonight we're going to cover the one hundred accounts, and Jason, I'll turn this over to you.
Okay, so like I said in the memo, we got a variety of different workshops covering different things. What I've done here is I've figured out two different things. You've got the preliminary budget for twenty twenty-five for each individual one. Each page will go through one by one. So we'll start out first on these elections. What it has is twenty twenty-three budget, twenty twenty-four, actual year-to-date where we're at, and then budgeted, and then the preliminary based off of everything going through. I kind of put in some numbers where I thought we would be, and we'll see as we go through. And this one is our expenditures revenue report for each one of these as well. So at the top of your page, it should be highlighted from the first page which one you're in, and then in pink and then in orange, I highlighted the year-to-date, and then wherever the year-to-date ends on the subsequent pages for that section as well. This is, like I said, this is the preliminary budget. Everything that I've gone through with my training and all that fun stuff is it basically says, you know, aim higher, we'll whittle it down. I've already kind of whittled down a lot of these as I've gone through. I've worked with Mike Buboni, our department heads, and trying to get everything to where we think it's kind of accurate with a little bit of extra room in there, but we can always, they say, go a little bit higher than we can come December, reduce from there as well and bring it back down. So, excuse me, anybody have any questions about that?
I have a question about the meeting times. I'm not gonna, I work during the day. I don't know. I think everyone else might be retired, but I work during the day. I can't be here at four.
Okay.
I struggle to be here by five because I work till five o'clock.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, just trying to make times work with as much as we can when we can. So we'll also have the Zoom available. If you want to just put it on the background, you can, if that's an option for you. So we'll make sure you get the information as well. And then if you want to meet with me, we can go through it one-on-one, too, and discuss it for that one that you're not able to make it to.
What are the other dates?
Next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, tomorrow.
Memo that I sent, I don't have it.
Yeah, Wednesday, tomorrow, and then next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
I was looking for the memo today, and I didn't find it.
No.
If you'd like, I'll resend it.
I was saying there's three next week, right?
I gotta resend.
Okay, and then.
Then there's the Monday before council is a temporary in case we, you know, a spot is, there's nothing on there, but if we need it, we can go through that.
I'll just make comment, it'd been nice to know ahead of time, you know, that they're one right after the other, because this is basically taking up our week. We have planning and zoning to, I mean, this is four nights next week.
I know. I'm gonna be here for other means, I get it. So, and it's one of those ones that we're coming in and trying to get it done. There's a lot going on, so.
Yeah, I get it. We just have planned better next year on.
I agree. I a hundred percent agree. So, and next year, we're kind of writing in to start doing these, hopefully starting in June, to actually have these and do the budget stuff and do it slightly different, but it's trying to find that repetition, that pattern, so. Any other questions?
Can you resend the date?
Yeah, I'll get that.
Wednesday, Wednesday, five o'clock.
Yeah, I'll get that. So we'll have one tomorrow night, same time, five o'clock, and then I'll have to resend that.
We get the next Monday, isn't it at four?
Yeah.
Five o'clock here.
I think it's Monday at four.
Because Monday was early because of the township meeting is that Monday as well. So, yeah.
Another question, if I got the memo, I don't remember seeing it.
It's been sent to your.
It was just one, yeah, you had to look down at the bottom of the first page where it kind of gave the times.
So. But it's not, I can resend it, but I'm pretty sure I got you on there for the email, so. Okay, anything else? This is not a decision-making final say-by as well. This is a workshop. We're going to talk things through. If it's high, it's high. If it's low, it's low. So we're here to do. I put in the best numbers I can. Obviously, I wasn't here last year, so I'm working with what I got and trying to do the best I can. Hey, Kenny, there's some extra stuff over there if you want. So, yeah. So we'll start with the first one. Figure we start with some easy ones today, get them out. The elections, I don't have anything put in there. I did talk with Renee. She said we might have some school stuff next year, so we might want to add something in there.
I think this might be a little bit high for Nick, well, even for what you had for the twenty-four, the fifty-five hundred, because you had one, two, or three elections this year.
We still have the primary. Don't forget that. So there'll be some stuff for the.
Yeah, I'm just. We've already had.
No, for, sorry, for the general election.
We've already had two already this year, I think.
Yeah. And then again, yeah, so. But that'll be, like I said, for next year, I don't know that we'll have any, you know, unless they choose to do a school something, but. And I know it's been every other year, like, see, twenty twenty-three, there is nothing new, there's nothing budgeted. So that's kind of what we went off with.
School referendum, ever.
No, this year, yeah, but for next year, you know.
Isn't it with the same general election?
Generally, the.
Isn't it for the regular election?
Referendums.
I think it is on ballot, you know.
A big general election.
So that's not a separate one.
Turn out.
I don't think so.
So if they're doing a referendum this year, I'd be surprised. They generally don't do them.
It sounds like we could probably cut that in half.
Yeah, well, yeah, because we've already done two at fourteen eighty-four.
Right.
Yeah.
Would be like twenty twenty-three where we didn't have anything. Twenty twenty-five.
That's my thought, is I don't think we're supposed to have anything. So unless there's a school referendum that pops up, I don't know how the schools do their referendums around here, so.
They like to, they like to do them in off years.
Well, and that's why about twenty twenty-three, there's nothing, so.
I mean, you know, at the most, I think you maybe have like twelve hundred dollars, something like that would be on the safe side.
You need something in there for the.
So maybe like two hundred for supplies and a thousand for election judges?
Yeah.
Okay. I can put that in there, so.
So two hundred and then?
A thousand.
Thousand.
I think that's something that we need, so, okay. Any other questions about that one? All right, move on to the next. Professional services. Um, so this one was labeled legal services, talking with Mike Buboni. Professional services would probably be a better name for it because it kind of encompasses, there is the thought to encompass a lot more into it with the oddity, and it's more than just legal stuff. So again, looking at twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four for the first chunk there, auditing and accounting services, you know, actual for twenty-three was almost thirty-four thousand. We haven't gotten the finalized payments yet from BBA for the audit stuff, so I'm guessing there'll be some more coming in for that. I don't know what that customarily is. Budgeted around thirty-seven, five, rounded up to thirty-eight. I have no idea, you know, if there's any other auditing or accounting services we're expecting for twenty twenty-five. I know there, I had asked about why the twenty twenty-four was that what it was, and Renee said that there was something that there might be extra audit stuff in there, but I don't know what was decided back then. So, any thoughts on that?
Well, did we have, did we have extra auditing stuff going on in twenty-three because of the water and sewer project? Is that some part of this?
No, everything was, I mean, looking at this for the twenty-three, thirty thousand and twenty-four, thirty-seven, I think that that might be a good guess at thirty-eight for that or something. It might be realistic.
Okay. Because I look at that, too, and I go, and I'll, we'll see as we come down here. Legal fees obviously is extraordinarily high this year. There's been a lot of legal fees. I think a little bit extra in there if for some reason next year legal fees are high again, having that offset from the auditing and planning, we can move around within that budget. And the professional services to go, yeah, we've got a little bit of extra space in here to kind of, to plan for that.
What about planning services? We didn't have anything budgeted, but we're ninety-four.
So, that was CMS, I believe. If you look at the stuff in here, that had to do with CMS.
One of us.
Heard that STAN Tech.
One of us.
The STAN Tech. Sorry, that was STAN Tech.
With the mic stuff was, you know, for thirty?
Well, he's talking to the second line down, the planning services. I think that was, you see in here, that was STAN Tech stuff that got put into there.
Hey, I'm okay with.
The planning and zoning and stuff, so ten thousand, like I said, I just went a little bit above what last year's, or what the year-to-date is right now. It's all going to do off of how much zoning stuff we actually will use next year, which is always a guess.
Hey, so we're okay with the auditing at thirty-eight then, right?
I'm okay.
Okay. Okay, planning, are we okay with ten thousand?
I guess.
Well, a lot of the.
We say STAN Tech, but what, what is it with STAN Tech? Do we know?
Planning services.
I'd have to pull this one.
Holding services.
We got one invoice there for thirty-six hundred dollars. I just got curious for that one.
I'm guessing they're, they're going through their reviewing plan stuff when it comes to, this was all from, these are all from June, beginning of June was the invoice. So plan, various plans.
Well, the most, the most of the stuff is kind of pass-through, isn't it? You pass it on to people requesting.
No, no.
There's security agreements on the issue on the subject. Send out for security agreements on the subject, maybe not on other thing.
Whatever else is, is there and above, that's why we hope to get some of our fees, but yeah.
Well, is next year with the, the new buildings and whatever coming into the city going to be more expensive?
Well, those are pass-through, I think, off of it, because we end up.
Because more. With any new projects, we would have security agreements with the developer, so we don't get, city doesn't get billed with these charges.
The other problem we run into is the ordinance is such that if we go over on the security agreement, we can't pass that along to the company, like, it's, it is what it is. Whatever we set the security agreement, that's what we're with. If we go over that, we eat that charge. So, and that's a city ordinance.
Well, some cases, we'll go back to the developer to ask for more funds, like I did with two sisters.
You could, you could, you could, you could draw the agreement to, to recoup any excess, excess needed funds.
And some of those changes happen because of the design, change in the design or something, has to go back through that whole process again. So we have asked, gone back to the developer and asked if we could cover that.
Well, like I said, I went off of what we write year-to-date and just kind of put it at that. Legal fees. Legal fees again, budgeted twenty-seven, five. This year, we're already at the fifty-one. I think that'll be significantly reduced next year. I'd like to hope that we can reduce that as a city and get those back down. I think thirty thousand is a good number. You know, a little bit above, we're seeing improvement, twenty-five hundred each year since twenty twenty-three. Obviously, prices increase every year, but I think thirty thousand would be a good number to try to strive to stay under.
You'll see a lot of ninety-seven dollars, forty-eight dollars, fifty-one dollars, fifty-five. You know, those small numbers are all typically just fifteen-minute phone calls, and if somebody calls him, he's going to bill us that quarter of an hour.
Well, and I, I will say, I know from my talking with him, there's a lot he hasn't billed from me talking with him when they're short conversations, too. So, I mean, he's, he's not nickel and dime and everything for us, but I know I talked to him frequently for fifteen minutes here or there, and there's no, no bill for that. So, you know, it's just, I think we've racked up a lot with, a lot of that being the council meetings. I mean, you're looking, the length of time he's there for those, those add up real quick.
And he had extra stuff this year.
Yep, absolutely. So, a lot of extra stuff he's been doing for us, which we really appreciate, but like I said, I think as we look into the, the future year here, I think that'll be reduced significantly. I think as we start to get squared away with stuff. So, any problems with thirty thousand, like it, keep it, bump it.
I think another idea just on that one, which would help out, because we're, Mike is billing his first travel time, too, if we could have him on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm okay.
I mean, that will save a lot of that in and out stuff that there is, so.
Yeah, I know. It's probably better for him, too.
Oh, yeah.
Great.
Yeah. Thirty thousand's a good number, leave it there. Okay.
Yeah. Legal notices, again, we're at eight thousand, something we budget fifty-five. Again, I kind of went with twenty twenty-three. I know there was a lot of legal notices sent out with, thing had to do with the wastewater treatment facility and stuff like that. So, you know, that number might be able to be budgeted down, let's say, maybe to the five, fifty-five, but I did bump it to five hundred from last year. I don't know that we'll necessarily go over it if we're using our legal less. That might be.
What happened in February? I'd like to know if that one bill out for that was five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's got to do with the Old State County Treasurer Finance. Great question.
I mean, that'd make a huge difference right there alone.
Well, I know some of these have to do with our, our notices when we go to the county when we're publishing different things.
Yeah, but that's, that's a lot. That's, that's five, fifty-two hundred bucks.
Maybe for the recording of all the easements?
It could've been, because I know they go through and do that periodically as well.
That should be every year.
Those, those.
No, that was.
No, they don't.
Those easements were just done, done for the construction process.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's a periodic.
But those should have been, those were like the year before they did the easements. And this is.
This is February, I'm sure.
There's some real prob, classification of real properties, too, that was, that could be that, too.
Can Renee come up with that and figure out what that?
Yeah, we can pull that one, pull that one, and see what that one was for.
Because I mean, that, that's what whacks everything out.
Way out of luck. So. Yeah, just to know what to. Okay. We'll, we'll come back to legal notices. I'll make it up. We'll, top of the tomorrow, first thing tomorrow, we'll come back to that one. Go from there. And next one here. Again, reimbursables. I have no idea what this one is. We haven't billed anything for it really the last, oh, twenty twenty-three, there was eight hundred dollars billed for it, nothing last year. I don't know if anybody can fill me in on what was happening in twenty twenty-three? Or what the legal notice reimbursables are?
I think the three hundred is good.
Good. All right, ordinance publication, again, that one set for three hundred. I know we'll probably have some, I don't, we'll probably have some fees for that. That's usually whenever we do a publication, whenever we change an ordinance, we have to public, post it publicly, however that may be. I don't know what WSB has planned for all of theirs and how they're going to, that's a big chunk. We're not going to obviously publish all of that in the paper. Maybe they'll have a, some kind of publish that says this has been changed. Go to this link or this Q R code and scan it, and it'll take you to wherever to do that. So that'll be somewhat to figure out with them, but usually those are all pretty minimal, but if we do have any ordinance changes, that's why that publication's there for three hundred, so. That's good. We'll go on to the next. Old State County Services, I have no idea what's been going on.
I mean, eighteen thousand in twenty twenty-three, you know, that was, right?
Well, I, I think that's.
It says Old State County P R L, that's certain property licensing.
Yes, I think that's got to do with some of the, the property stuff, but again, that was budgeted last year, and we've used twenty grand for it, and we used forty-six this year.
We used eighteen thousand.
That's why I put it at a thousand. I'm like, this is.
What, right?
We followed up with twenty-three, then eighteen grand. I have followed up with Renee. She has no, like, that's the best we can come up with is it's got to do with the, the land when they come in and they, on their map, their land use map, and adjust anything on their land use map, like, hey, no, we had this variance, now this has changed, these two, you know, the, these property lines have changed, stuff like that. So she had no idea what the twenty twenty-three was, or why it was, I don't know why it was budgeted in twenty twenty-four for that amount.
Those are property licenses directly, that's where, that's where they would be recording those easements.
Yeah.
Like at the back, our place search easement.
Which page you have on there?
Well, right here on.
Oh, that one, yeah.
No, there's a number here that says actual for twenty twenty-three, it's eighteen, four, eight. But then, it was, we had budgeted, because of that, we'd budgeted twenty thousand this year.
I agree with the thousand, just to put it in there. It's just the value of there. Something.
Yeah. All right, so that brings our total to eighty-five, six as of right now. I'll look at the legal notices section there to see where that five came from, and we'll touch on that one tomorrow. Can we get that one figured out? Okay, on to planning and zoning. So, sort of kind of hit our first fun part. So we've got the commission wages set at four thousand fifty dollars for the commission members for that. After talking with our financial advisor, Mike Buboni, going through this stuff, and I agree with him, the salaries and wages, how this stuff was done in the past is so confusing on our end and takes so much time to try to do. So what we're doing is, we're doing that this year, so you'll see when it gets to, I think tomorrow we'll go through, like mine and Renee's and all that, where it says salary and wages undermined, it's my salary and my wage. Where, when it's Renee's, it's Renee's salary and wage. It's not ten percent here, ten percent there. Like, this is.
Trying to figure that out.
This is absolutely confusing, so that's why we took out in, and then in Kane's, you'll see where it says under Public Works, all of his guys are under Public Works for salaries and wages. And then, so everywhere else, we're had salaries and wages, with the exception of here for, for planning and zoning and council members, everything else is zeroed out. So you'll see big increases in those areas, just because we're piling all that back into there.
I agree with that.
So, so you'll see the, the zeroed out on those, the health benefits para. We do still take out taxes for the salaries and wages for the commissioners, so that's that. Any questions on those?
Well, on that one, for the salaries, wait for the commissioners off of that, wasn't there some that was pulled in twenty twenty-four from twenty twenty-three? So we should have something that went against that, four thousand dollars.
There was nothing noted in the budget that I had, so.
Well, I, because I mean, anybody that was, you know, a commissioner on planning and zoning didn't have it, but I mean, it doesn't show up here as, as the twenty twenty-four, and that was done in January.
Oh, you're talking, they get, okay, I get what you're saying.
So, so we got to find out what that is, because that will give us a better indication, but I think you're pretty close on that, but there should be a number in there.
Okay, so this was paid for remaining Janu, well, yeah, but this, so this would be something that.
We've done in January of, of twenty-four.
Okay. Look at that.
But I think that, that being about the same is about right for that.
Yeah, okay, let's see about that. Okay. Um, so planning services, this is where we get into stuff. Previous year, there was forty set aside for STAN Tech and forty for W, or not, yeah, for WSB, excuse me, I think is what I had in here. And then it was the extra on top of that that got us to the budgeted ninety-three was just for other services. My understanding is their contract monies are already set aside. They were supposed to be done in December, so we would have all that budgeted money anyways for them, whether they go into next year or not. It's for WSB. So I took them out and just had forty for STAN Tech and then ten thousand for other services for, for planning stuff. And this is more, when it says planning, I look at this as zoning, STAN Tech zoning, because we use Phil Carlson for the zoning. I mean, it's fair. You'll see in here the STAN Tech consulting services, and actually, if you look at his consulting services for the year is at fifty-five thousand already. He's got a good chunk of. Of that.
Can I put in the wrong?
Oh, my goodness.
Right.
Oh, no, no. Okay, sorry. I'm, I'm in my head. So, yeah, so his, he's, you know, he's used up for that one section. This bit, STAN Tech has used up fifty-five thousand of that. That's been, that's been pretty much them for the most, most of it. There is obviously some in here for WSB, a couple of, I don't know, it's probably say, well, they've got a five thousand, so they've got a fair chunk of that, never mind. But yeah, for that, right now, we're at fifty-five of the allotted ninety-three thousand. So, but again, I, I thought forty thousand was fair for STAN Tech. You can see the breakdowns in there. And then if we have any other services, so I don't know what we may have, but I figured I'd get ten thousand budgeted for that, just in case, or STAN Tech goes higher, we need to cover WSB a little bit more. I don't, that was my thought for that.
I agree with that. I think that, that's good. Funding services, engineering fees, they look about right, too, because I mean, we were over twenty-three at ten thousand nine hundred and two.
Yep.
And we're right now at, at eight thousand. We budgeted twelve. I, I think that, that keeping that the same at twelve is the right thing to do off of that, too, so I agree with that.
Okay. Again, no idea what this reimbursable engineering fees, if there's something, what that's from. I've seen zero and zero across the board for the last two years. Does anybody know what that is? If we can reduce that to zero, I'm fine. Or.
We have both, well, we have reimbursable legal fees underneath that, too, so.
Yeah, I just, I don't know what the reimburse, what the plan or the thought was with the reimbursable.
They actually used something twenty-three, but we don't know what it was for, right?
Well, that's the legal, that was the legal, not the engineering fees, reimbursable engineering fees.
I mean, we want to be on the high side anyway, we probably, we go down because we've got to submit this by the end of September, so.
Well, let's, well, let's leave, let's leave that reimbursable engineering fees where it is if we have.
Yeah.
It gives a question mark.
It gives an X at the end of the year if we do that.
Yeah, because I, I'll, I'll look back, I'm looking at it here. There was some fees, well, okay, reimbursable engineering fees, that's what I think we're looking at. So, twenty twenty-two was twenty thousand we got billed, and twenty twenty-one was three hundred and eighty-two thousand. I'm guessing that's wastewater treatment stuff that we get reimbursed for.
Landing.
Same one.
Same one, the, the, the engineering fees, the reimbursable engineering fees.
Yeah.
So I'm guessing that's from the wastewater treatment facility. So as we see that, obviously, we're coming into the tail end of that. There'll probably be a few things next year, but that might be covered, but otherwise. And with that, the legal fees, I'm guessing, would be following the same thing if there's any legal fees that are.
Kind of funny one if we didn't have our funding. Remember, twenty twenty's when we got our funding, so, funding, so.
Okay, so those are good.
I think legal fees.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay.
S E H.
S E H, so this is for the.
Regional Water Trail?
Yeah, the Regional Water Trail with the other counties and whatnot. Ryan, I can get to talk.
So the funding there is all in and out. So we had funds that we used from the counties that were participating in, but now we have writing a new contract because we were awarded a hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the state from L C C M R for the next phase of the Zambro River Regional Water Trail. So when we start getting that, we'll start billing S E H, or S E H will start billing us, and we'll be paying out of that hundred and seventy, so it's a hundred, it's an in-and-out process.
Right.
So.
So this is kind of just.
Is a five a good one?
It's just a placeholder. There's also a, when you look at the revenue side, there should be an S E H on the revenue side as well, so it's meant to be an in-and-out, doesn't affect our, it could be zero for what we, but I think the five thousand dollar figure is there, but that's okay.
I mean, we get lower to like two thousand. It's one of those things that.
If it doesn't need to be there.
It's a, it's more or less a placeholder, I think, because if something comes in and then waits, it's, so it's, it doesn't throw off the books for too long.
Goes out.
Yeah, so.
Maybe we.
Well, again, when I'm looking at this, it's the first goal, we want to be a little bit on the high side and come down.
Okay, so we'll look at.
I agree.
For the, for the.
So this way at least.
So we'll keep it, or do you want to keep it a five and plan on potentially cutting it in December down to the twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay, so. All right. Okay, we'll leave it at the five for now. Uh, but yeah, we'll look at cutting it back. Uh, planning and zoning, I'm guessing this is for the commission. They get a money.
Does that go under salaries and wages after that one?
No, the salaries and wages is just that. They're salaries and wages, cause that's also that affects payroll taxes. This is like they've got.
This was our uh planning and zoning. This is a um.
Like if.
Fee for appraisal thing.
Yeah. So like, yeah. So it's got here is appraisal fees.
I'm not sure why it's only fifteen hundred because it was a three thousand dollar charge for the appraisal. Or you didn't build us for the other fifteen hundred.
Or they've only gotten half of it paid for the year and then half of it will come later.
Your budget of three thousand. I'm, I don't think we're anticipating any other appraisal coming up next year.
Yeah, I don't know. That's why I reduced it. I didn't either the two thousand just to be safe if there's something that comes up, cause it's kind of in the middle of budgeted and actually so far. I mean, I'm open for whatever with it. Okay, so we'll keep that good. I don't know what the, I guess in ordinance E A W again. Not sure if that kind of falls under the same category.
Environmental stuff.
So probably, yeah, just in case there's environmental studies or something or.
Yeah, twenty twenty-three at twelve thousand budgeted. We cut that down in twenty twenty.
Probably a potential taking three thousand out of it, but we can leave that for December.
Hmm, okay, so let's let's look at, say, maybe cutting it in December.
Yeah.
To maybe, I don't know, three to three thousand? All right, that works. Perfect. Okay, and then miscellaneous expenses. There's always been something budgeted. I think I just rounded up to five hundred for, if we can move that to whatever. Three hundred, five hundred. It was five hundred in twenty twenty-three. I don't know that anything actually gets used out of it, so I'm okay dropping it. I think that'll be good.
Well, five hundred is fine.
You know. I think that can be used by planning and zoning for whatever purposes they need to use it for, so. Okay, any other questions on planning zoning? Oh, okay, on to the next.
I think they did five hundred dollars in there quite a few years.
Never used it.
Not gonna get.
Exactly.
Not gonna break us on that one for what we're doing.
All right, uh, public safety. I don't know why this is in public safety other than it's building inspections. It's just a weird name for that. Is there anything else we'd like to name in this category? Every time I look at it, my first thought is, oh, police or something like that. And I'm like, wait, no, that's not right. So.
I don't, my question on the settlement, especially going into this building inspection is, is thirty thousand realistic of what there is? If we had budgeted fifteen, we're already at twenty-five year to date. And I know we're a little bit less than that, but we had budgeted thirty-eight thousand back in twenty twenty-three.
Use the twenty-one. I it depends on what we're looking at for future growth and what, you know, how much inspection services we're gonna have. Like I said, I I I thought it should be reduced. I think it was fifty, but I, you know, looking at what we were in twenty twenty-three, thirty-eight, we were still, you know, seventeen thousand off of that, so.
And even even if the water meter things and the sewer stuff that, you know, Kane, the the inspection stuff that you got, you got to pay for them when you get the permit. So it's kind of like, it's it's covered too that.
Yeah, but we're we're not not using CMS for that.
You're not, you're not for the sewers.
Yeah, it's for the water and that, so.
You're not using CMS for the water and stuff, so.
Oh, like you said, I thought thirty was reasonable. And my other thing was the miscellaneous expense. We used it twenty twenty-three for, I don't know. We've got not year to date, and if for some reason we go over, we are covered, we got four thousand, we can still allocate back into building inspections. So I don't know what other miscellaneous expenses we would incur. Um, with.
And we had three thousand in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, with public safety, but again, when looking at, I I I see this as public safety, but it's no, it's it's CMS and the other stuff. You know, unless there's something coming from the state where we have to, you know, the state charges should be billed through there. But that's a usually a revert almost. First of all, that's a, they pay for that.
But we don't, but we are going that three dollars in this form in twenty twenty-three.
So the fifty thousand that was projected, that was like a thirty percent increase over twenty twenty-three, so. I don't.
Yeah, but we're running at twenty-five thousand. Yeah, cause we're running at that twenty-five. This is absolutely through August.
So here, okay, so do we want to say thirty-five reevaluate in December?
Say maybe thirty-five, you know, I mean, cause we're
Okay.
we're halfway through the year.
So we'll reevaluate while we're three quarters of the way through here, so um.
Do thirty-five and see what do we look like in December.
Okay, so I'll make that adjustment on air. Okay. That brings us up to twelve thirty-nine for this one. You can tell we're on the same page here, or nine thousand. Anything else? Like I said, I just don't like that public safety. Anything you have a better idea for a name?
Was it for street lights?
Which are street paintings and all that.
No, this is just.
Streets and roads.
Other streets and roads.
What about just calling it building inspection services or? There's only two.
Inspection services?
And there's only two line items and one of them you're talking about getting rid of, right? The miscellaneous, it sounds like that could.
Well, we use that in twenty twenty-three though, the miscellaneous.
Yeah. I don't know. I like inspection services. I guess. Just better than public safety.
That was the only year. Safety, if we're questioning what the heck it is, and why do we keep it?
Just looking back to twenty nineteen, guys, we never used that miscellaneous at all. We used it once in uh five years.
So it's not like we couldn't couldn't pull out of our hat someplace else if we needed it. I'd say.
Well.
Pretty much.
Well, we'll save that for a.
Let us see that and then we can cut it.
You want to cut it in half now and then cut it all the way in December?
Oh, let's just leave it this way then.
Okay.
From the four thousand, right?
Yeah.
Just say cut in December.
Um, so the next one, police protection, we have subcontracting. We only got one under here. Um, so you look at our current budgeted sixty-one thousand. What I did is I took the current contract, which I think is sixty-three thousand, and I got an attached email here that I got from uh from them. I didn't attach the current contracts. I figured everybody had that, but uh basically it lays out what the price is here. Budgeted for it. And I looked at this and said, okay, if we took an extra five hours a week, cause I know there's been a lot of people, citizens and everybody requesting. It's been a hot topic, having more, you know, more enforcement in town. Um, and me personally, I absolutely think that, you know, we do. Um, so I think that five was a, in my mind, was a reasonable compromise, so it doesn't drastically shoot up the budget, but it's still gonna be a good chunk of change on that one.
With the sheriff's approval to go additional five hours?
Well, yeah, he gave the option of, yeah, if we want to adjust this, we can adjust this. It's just a matter of, you know, we're at twenty hours per week if we want to do uh twenty-two hours per week. Um, we just need to discuss it, uh, what the city would like to see. And then we do an addendum or M O U to the current contract, he said. Uh, and resign it, so.
I think with the extra businesses that are coming in, you know, where you're looking at Two Sisters and Dollar Tree. Or Dollar General, excuse me, you're you're gonna end up that there could be some stuff that that happens, whether it be accidents or who knows what, that would take up the extra.
Kind of get the theft in the county or the towns around us, you know, at some point.
The arson cult.
So that's, that's why I have that. That's a specific number. I did the math on it and added it in there, and that's kind of where we're at with that. Um, I mean, I could bump it up to eighty just to make it an even round number.
Let's do it eighty just to have.
So.
Bump up to eighty, what?
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand from seventy-eight, nine to eighty thousand. But that was, like I said, I wanted to show you guys, that is the the number with the math done, so.
So five hours per week is probably
What was it?
Thirty-five minutes a shift.
Twenty-five hours per week.
It's an hour, sixty-six minutes.
Right on.
An hour. Five hours per week and that's twenty-six six. Seven days and two shifts.
Sure, however you want to look at it. I mean. I'm I'm open for more. I mean, I'll give them a forty hours a week. I don't care. Like, to me, like, I was just trying to be reasonable, like, it's gonna be a drastic increase. Either way, which eventually I think it will continue to rise, but.
Yeah, we gotta have public safety.
Five, five hours this year, five hours next year, and just continually grow that contract. And as as we get more houses and more business, we'll have a bigger influx of money coming in off of taxes. Um, you know, where we'll be able to maintain the level we're at while increasing this value as well, because we've got.
I agree with the five hours. I'm just saying.
So, you know, as maybe, you know, down the road, instead of twenty-five next year, you go, oh, we're gonna bump that up to forty. We'll, you know, we'll bump it up thirty-five or whatever.
And I think based on the number.
Yeah.
Ended up at forty hours a week is not a bad.
No, I think.
No, and that's, that's fairly common, especially among towns our size, around that three thousand. As you start to get up to there, you're looking forty hours a week is pretty.
So so forty hours, that's cause.
But I'll also say, they they did say to us too, we have the added benefit. We do have some deputies that live in town and some that are crossing through town anyways to go home to Pine Island and those places, so. You know, we're lucky. We do get some extra patrol, if you will, just because of their location of where some of their deputies live. So that is kind of nice too.
There was only fifty-eight incidents last month for wrong enforcement here.
I think that's what it said, something like that.
For the month or for the year.
For the month. That includes all, that's all their contacts, whether it be
Yeah.
beat enforcement and stuff like that. And there's, you know. So.
That's increasing.
Well, and I think as we go through, you know, we'll get a good idea of it as we go month by month, to be able to pull the yearly pallys at the end of the year and go, hey, this was your month by month. Type of thing, so. All right.
Oh, I I just see you had attachment.
Yep, I have the attached email, so you guys know what's, what's going on with the numbers there too. If somebody want to do their own math. Sometimes I get tired and map just whatever. Um, snow and ice. Right? Absolutely. Type in the wrong number, fat fingered. Again, you'll see snow and ice removal. Um, and this also includes the sanding. Wages are gone, payroll's gone, subcontracted services.
We've already got that contract, right?
Yeah, and so the contract is based off of, Kane can explain this a little bit well better too. It's based off of.
Time usage, timing of material. So if it's a busy winter, you know, snowfall every other day, sanding every other day, bowing every other day. It's just an hourly rate that we're paying our contractors and and now likewise, last year, it was a very mild winter, hardly anything.
Eight thousand dollars or eighty-six hundred last year instead of forty-eight thousand that was budgeted.
A handful of events last year that required attention, so.
And now we're gonna come into the end of this year, so there'll be more expenditures as we get into probably late October, November, December. Maybe if we're lucky, just December. Um, you know, but it's one of those we'll see a little bit, but it is, it's tough to gauge.
You can't, yeah.
What we're at. I did.
And the five percent is not a bad increase on what you're looking at, cause we never know what fuel costs are gonna be.
Yeah.
On that, that goes along with that contract, so.
Let's, yeah. Okay. The only thing with that, we good with that?
Leave any of that?
Yeah. All right, economic development. Um, talked with Rebecca. This is our sheet of contracts, about thirty-two thousand. I think it was slightly less. I just put in thirty-two to make it an even number. Um, somewhere around there uh for the their contract.
Help me understand that. How many hours does she work?
She works one day a week.
That's eight hours.
Thirty-two hours a month.
Yeah. Fifty-two times eight.
What are we paying her per hour?
Right, two months. I don't know that it's necessarily her, it's a
Or the.
Yeah, it's seed up.
I'd guess two months here, two months here, it'd be forty hours.
So two hundred fifty-six hours. So a hundred twenty-five an hour.
Hundred twenty-five an hour?
That's pretty good. My tattoo artist is like a hundred and fifty, two hundred.
Not that.
That include the tip?
No, no, not at all. I mean, that's.
I think that's a lot.
I, that's, I think standard across the board in your contract and cause that covers, that covers all our travel time, that covers, you know, they're not, it's all, as far as I understand, stuff, it's all in the contract. We're not getting separate bills for this or that, it's it's an all inclusive.
Working outside the eight hours.
Yeah, cause she does do, she does just do stuff outside the eight hours as well, like during, if we need something, we can email her and she'll be responsive to us and so.
It isn't actually a law for her, right?
No, it's. Yeah, it's the.
So they got how many other benefits they got to pay.
Yeah.
Charments, whatever else.
So.
The times we live.
So so it's, we're budgeting thirty-two thousand for the, yeah, thirty-three thousand for the year.
Yeah.
Salaries and wages help make that difference.
Cause this, this includes that thirty thousand we talked about the other night, right? I'm sorry, this talking, did this include that thirty thousand we talked about the other night? That E D A. No, that's what, because at our last E D A meeting, I know Rebecca talked to you about seed money for.
Yeah, there was some other stuff, but it was never decided. So that's where we were running into a time crunch with them. So I had talked with them, a lot of other, you look at other towns. Um, E D A is themselves. Um, and this isn't like a, this isn't like a the contract paper. This is for the E D A commission. They have funding set aside to do certain things, to give out loans to small businesses, to um, do a variety of things. And she can talk a little bit more about that in depth. Um, but just through my conversation with her, you know, there's, there's a lot of cities do that to help bring in, you know, cause the E D A is that starting point for businesses to bring them in to to work with them. And that goes for you know, a variety. But the biggest thing it's used for is grant matching and scholarship, scholarship, I don't know. Scholarships for, you know, scholarships, not.
Grant loans.
Set down in two pieces, what were they? So at our E D A meeting two weeks ago, we were talking about a seed money of like fifteen thousand. And if we could, it's a start for seed money. If we, if we, the city was doing like fifteen thousand every year for, say, three or four years, all of a sudden we've got thirty, forty thousand dollars that we can help um, transition loans, maybe have a revolving loan fund set up, but we recognize fifteen thousand, it's not gonna, but it's a starting point for seed money. Was our discussion that we would like to propose.
What was the, what was the other part for?
I don't remember.
I'm not recalling right offhand these.
We just talked about the seed money and.
There's like three or four other categories that I talked with her about, but that was kind of the big thing was the seed money at the end that started.
Well, they they were about equal. One was like fourteen something, the other was fifteen for the seed money, so.
It might have been one for grants and one for like your s- your small business loans, the seed money. So like, we have to do, we have to match grants for a lot of, there's a lot of grants out there that they can get, but there has to be some matching funds with it. Well, the cities will automatically set aside money for E D A to be able to help match those grants or provide, you know, some of that funding is what it is, so.
I'd like to leave that discussion open. I'm not sure what the right line item or what it would say, but I think it's something worthy of a discussion.
And I I I think the intention was to try and get it before E D A, to get it before council, to talk about it with council members in an official capacity at council to be able to say, yeah, we would like to see this. That's why I didn't end up on these preliminary budget today. So.
So we can.
If we go along with with this thirty-two thousand and the thousand, okay, the thirty-three total. Okay, and then leave that open for us to discuss that as it gets closer to the end of the month then, before we submit it. We can go back over and see, does that make sense?
September seventeenth meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's one of those, if if you'd like, I can get Rebecca to come in and talk more about that.
Well, I'm just saying, yeah, we want to ensure this is needed to be done. We want to do it by the end of September.
At least put together like a a one sheet about about what that stuff is.
Yeah, I mean, let's go, let's approve these then, when we're looking at the. Yeah, I mean, let's go, let's approve these, and we're looking at the thirty-two and the one.
So we'll, we'll look at the extra funding. I'll talk with Rebecca about possible extra funding. I would say thirty. Thirty thousand is what you're gonna be looking at, fifteen and fifteen for the two, the two main ones, the grants and the small business loans, so. If that sounds fair.
Yeah, span on the.
Oh, all right. Um and then we will move on to the last one here then. Um this is our miscellaneous category on our other sheet. This is the uh one fifty transfers out to the capital fund. Um you'll see in here, this hasn't been done, the two last two haven't been done because. Um I don't know why twenty twenty-three, um but it was supposed to be done at the beginning, from my understanding. And Renee was not aware for twenty twenty-four, so it's one of those things, it's there, it just hasn't been transferred over yet.
Okay, so it's already been paid then.
Well, no, cause that's why it's not actually year-to-date, but we have it, it just never got transferred over, cause there was. She doesn't know when, that's not something she was ever was taught, trained, told when to transfer that over. So it's still in the budget, it's still there, the money's still there, it just never got put into that category yet.
Public Works Truck. We cover that.
Yeah.
Journal entry also, if there's any. Um transfer journal entry for the uh supporting the uh sewer fund operational expenses. It could also be, I'm I'm not sure where that status is, on our sewer fund revenue expenditures, but that was also the other purpose for a hundred and fifty, so. To cover. Operational services if needed.
If needed, yeah.
And I, yeah, that's gonna, yeah, that's still gonna need to be helped covering that, cause we're. Not where we, the city is not where they thought they would be um at this point, so. Um. But again, kept it at one fifty for this year. I do think that this needs to increase in future years. To help grow our capital fund for big projects, as we start to look at doing, you know, capital improvement plans and things like that, it's going to cost. Extra money, so in future years, it's something that the city needs to be aware of, you know. Decide it's time to start looking at a, a new city hall, community center for the the city as it grows. That's gonna be part of, it's gonna be coming out of there, you know, there's, there's road projects and things like that, that came with chomping at the bit to do. Um you know, a lot of that's gonna, we can budget some in the the streets and roads, but. Right now, a lot of that comes out of the C I P, and in future projects, that's where it would come from, cause that's how you budget for those kind of things, like you put aside that money and then. You've got that in and out from the C I P into those other accounts.
What does C I P mean?
Capital Improvement Plan, Capital Improvement Fund, C I F, so. Um so yeah, so I left it at the one fifty. You know, it's, it's, it's one of those, I I initially had it up to two hundred. Um. I had higher numbers in a lot of categories, just because I, you know, again, I think this, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in the city overall, the whole budget. Um and I sent it to Mike, and was like, hey, look this over, and he goes, hmm, you gotta reduce some stuff, but. So that was one of the things to help bring it back down, was okay, we're gonna take that fifty thousand back off. Um but I do think in future years, that's something we really need to look at going, this probably should be increased a little bit. Um to start saving up that nest egg to make sure, you know. We have that funding, and it'll come with with vehicles, as Kane, we get into a rotation with vehicles for Kane. For Public Works and Parks and stuff like that, and other, other vehicles, the fire department, as their vehicle goes out, and there's just a lot of function and use for it. So having that is gonna be important to have that nest egg, as we continue to grow as a city.
So the last time we had a capital improvement fund discussion, it was like twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. Where we went through all the capital budgets for all the different departments, and we allocated. This year we're gonna spend seventy-five thousand, next year a hundred thousand, so I think that's something we need to have with Mike, and maybe you've talked to him about that, we should have. Uh upfront discussion about our capital expenditures over the next five years and.
So this is the, this is kind of how these are gonna go for the rest of the time here. Any comments, questions, concerns, complaints, fixes, I don't know, I think it's.
I think it's good, I just have to bring the rest.
I, I keep them short and sweet and, you know.
He's got his other stuff, I'll bring that by spreadsheet, so he can pull out a few more.
Yeah, I I want to keep it simple. I looked at the last few years, I didn't want, I figured everybody else had the big spreadsheet, so if you want to bring those, obviously bring those, um.
Just the glass back, cause that gives that.
Absolutely.
Take a look at.
So. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Exactly, and I, that's why I put them separate too, so you guys can have them separate and look together, and it's not one after the next, you're flipping back and forth, so. We will uh this plan on same, same layout for the next, you know, so. I'll let Riley do the adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We'll just all be in the meeting.
Workshop, we don't have to be super fancy.
Five, five fifty-nine, fifty-eight, something.
We're done, alright.